For this session of the Tacoma Park City Council, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dabala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Here.
All right, welcome everyone. We do have a change to tonight's agenda. Our first voting item, the first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2.16, Boards and Commissions, and Chapter 8.40, Commercial District Facade Regulations, has been tabled this evening. We had a number of questions for the city staff, and the council would like to bring that back as another work session before voting on it. So, we will get that back on the rolling agenda. And then, we had another change that we'll talk about on the resolution providing for appointments to Committee on the Environment. So, after tonight, next week, Wednesday, February 14th, I'll have our city council meeting here. We will have our youth council update. Next week, we will have a voting item, which is the first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding outdoor cafes. Our work sessions will include a presentation on the Montgomery County Development Review Process, process for updating and providing information on the work of State Highway Administration, and process for working with S.H.A., including the Piney Branch Road and Ritchie Avenue intersection. We'll have a discussion of public school facility needs, and a work session on the FY 2019 Community Development Block Grant Projects. Then, on the next Wednesday, the 21st, council will meet again here at 7:30. We have a proclamation for Rare Disease Day that evening. Our voting session will include the second reading ordinance amending the code regarding outdoor cafes, a single reading ordinance awarding contract for a stormwater study, resolution authorizing submission of the FY 2019 Community Development Block Grant Projects. Our work sessions that evening will be a discussion of the Tacoma Junction Traffic Studies, quarterly financial reports for quarters one and two, and a discussion of the personal property tax. Then on Monday, February 26th, here in the auditorium at 7:00 PM, there will be a forum on the draft Housing Strategic Plan. And remember, this is still a draft document, and people should come and comment on that that evening. Then on Wednesday, February 28th, council is going to have a work session at 7:30. We will actually meet in the Azalea Room that evening. We will be having a roundtable discussion with the council, with the staff on council priorities. We will review our draft council priority document with the senior leadership team, and actually, our council has a work session on that document this evening. We'll identify priorities for the FY 2019 budget, and then select areas of responsibility for individual city council members. And then, that'll take us through February. I think we don't have anything for the record tonight, so then we'll take public comments on voting items. We have, our first voting item will be a single reading ordinance regarding purchase of police vehicles. Any comments on that? Next is a second reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of furniture for Human Resources Department. And then, we have a consent agenda with a resolution appointing the youth council advisor and a resolution providing for appointments to the Committee on the Environment. All right, no comments on voting items, then we'll now turn to general public comments. So if you have any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ajmal Qureshi. I'm an attorney at the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. I'm also the co-director of the Howard University Civil Rights Law Clinic, as well as a board member of the ACLU of Maryland. I'm here in my ACLU and Howard University capacities this evening. I'm also a resident of Tacoma Park. I live at 400 Elm Avenue in Tacoma Park, across the street from our esteemed mayor, who I sometimes see in the morning. I'm here to talk to you about a bill that the ACLU of Maryland has been working on. I've had the opportunity to speak to a couple of the council members. I will be very brief. The bill essentially makes attorneys' fees available for Maryland constitutional violations. And I'm here asking for the City of Tacoma Park's support for this bill. Now, you may think, greedy attorney here to gin up fees for himself. That is not the purpose of this bill. The way the law currently stands, attorneys' fees are only available for attorneys for federal constitutional violations. Why does this matter? It essentially matters if you're, because there are only two places in Maryland where you can file federal claims. Essentially, you can file them in Greenbelt, and you can file them in Baltimore. So if you live in southern Maryland or western Maryland, unfortunately, you would have to come all the way to Baltimore or Greenbelt to seek redress for a violation, if a violation has occurred to you. Over the last two years, through the increased accessibility of social media, we have unfortunately become aware of individuals who have been the victims of police brutality. We all know the names, and many of us have seen the videos of these tragic incidents, whether it's Michael Brown in Ferguson, Walter Scott in Charleston, Eric Garner in Staten Island, New York. We've seen that police brutality and government misconduct is a real problem, and unfortunately, there is a real racial disparity when it comes to this government misconduct. African-Americans accounted for 31% of police killing victims in 2012, even though they made up just 13% of the US population. Black males aged 15 to 34 were nine times more likely than other Americans to be killed by law enforcement officers. There were almost 1,100 deaths at the hands of police in 2016. This is more than twice the number of the FBI's annual number of justifiable homicides by police. So those are just some of the numbers that I can throw your way. Again, we've all seen the unfortunate, terrible videos of Michael Brown, Walter Scott, and Eric Garner. This bill would seek to make attorneys' fees available for individuals who are seeking redress for Maryland constitutional violations. You're going to hear the opponents of this bill say that this is going to raise costs. Unfortunately, if the government does nothing wrong, there are no costs.
Thank you, Mr. Qureshi.
Thank you for your time.
All right, any other public comments this evening?
Good evening. My name is Alexandro Mishkovich. I am president of Tenant Association in Essex House, 777 Maple Avenue. First, I would like to thank personally Mr. Siemens for helping Robin. I don't know her last name. She was actually a homeless lady on the Maple and Lincoln. Unfortunately, she died, I believe, a few days ago, and I wish that we could help her more. So, our hearts go to her family. Second part, I want to thank Mr. Smith. Thank you so much for all your support. We need more, so please, you know, help us out there. Also, I would like to thank, this is unfortunately the first time, but she was helping us all these four years that I have been president in Essex House. Her name is Roseanne Look. She is City of Tacoma Park Council for Tenant Group, I believe. She was coming every single meeting. I mean, unbelievable. I mean, just amazing woman. So, thank you. We found out a few days ago that CPDC, which is owner of the building of Essex House, is running for pilot for some kind of tax payments. But before you bring any decision, I would like to hear us. We having extremely issues with them. We are dealing and emailing them, and trying to organize them, and trying to push them to do something particular to help us. But unfortunately, from one meeting to another meeting, past now four years, I've been living in the building for 10. We having issue with the hot water. I mean, it's driving me crazy. Everybody's in the building having the same issue. Every time when we complaining, they come, they do something, touch something, whatever, but we still having the same issue. You're going to read this.
Just read the whole thing.
Then, we having issue with the floors. So, four years ago, we had remodeling of the building. Unfortunately, there was just kind of touch-ups. We really didn't need that. But now, we having issue with floors that is actually coming up. So, when they come, they's actually not fixing it. Then, we have leaks that is on the first floor of the building. They're saying that is from the AC. We really don't know what. I don't think so they either. But, I mean, that is keep coming, and we don't know anymore what to do.
Great. And you can send us the whole list. You can email.
We'll send you the email then.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue, and I'll be brief tonight. The council's draft priorities document has a number of strategies in it. There's one that's unique. It's the one to acquire grant funding to provide racial equity training to members of council-appointed committees and other residents. That's the only one of the strategies that's made contingent on finding grant funding. I think it's a great idea to try to find grant funding, but I think that that training is a great idea as well, and sufficiently important, that it ought to be pursued even if the grant funding isn't found. So I would hope that the council might agree with that position, and simply strike the words "acquire grant funding too" from that particular strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Sean Henley. I live on East Ridge Avenue in Tacoma Park, and I also work for the city up at Public Works. I was here last week. I presented a petition from Ask Me, the union that represents city workers, and the format of these meetings doesn't really allow for public comments, but I did want to provide some context to the petition and respond to a couple of the remarks that the city manager made last week. I've got a couple quotes here, who said that we pay well over, this is the city, we pay well over a living wage in Tacoma Park. There is no full-time employee in the City of Tacoma Park that earns less than $40,000 per year, and we are very generous with our salaries at the lower level positions. So I have here, and I actually made copies for everybody, this is a study from the Economic Policy Institute. It was done in 2015. It goes, it gives a basic, like, cost of living, like, considering housing, food, childcare, otherwise, that, you know, it's more all-encompassing. Yeah, like I said, it's done in 2015, so it's a bit inaccurate, but for one person with no kids, the annual cost of living to make ends meet is $41,424. For two adults and two children, it is $79,330. And that's for Maryland suburbs. You type in your area code, and it gives you a more accurate idea of the cost of living. So, you know, a bit more about that. Historically, municipal jobs were a gateway to the middle class, particularly for people of color. They, I don't know, I'd like to know when, they did become, and they cannot become, a gateway for mediocrity and a gateway to just living paycheck to paycheck. I mean, for, like, it was an opportunity to get out of, like, general labor jobs and actually have a profession where you're able to support a family, buy a house, all that kind of stuff. And it's not currently, speaking for myself and several fellow workers up at Public Works, we have to work second jobs just to be able to have some financial security and not just live paycheck to paycheck. And I think that generosity is sort of an empty term when spoken by those that have the power to give and to take. So, it's, it should come from below, from the people that are receiving, not those that are actually giving. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening, and yeah, there's a bit of background about how the study was done, and also the results for the Maryland suburbs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I think I'm maybe your last public commenter. My name is Candace Wolfe. I live in this community. I live on Garland Avenue, close to the Adventist Hospital. I've lived here. I want to speak to the same subject of union negotiations. I've lived here for almost 40 years, raised my three children here. Over the years, I've worked in a number of jobs in the Tacoma Park community, shelving books at the library, stocking shelves, and checking out customers at the food co-op, teaching students at Piney Branch Elementary School as a performing artist. I present yearly programs at the Folk Festival and at the library, and right here on this stage, in this auditorium. And I even do my bit to try to get Pat Lovelace, the peace delegate here, when it's not raining and bad weather. And my point is that I have very deep roots. I have a long history here, and I cannot think of one aspect of life in this community that does not depend on the hard work of the city workers, of the city employees. I mean, we're talking about the crossing guards who are responsible for the safety of our children, the workers at the rec center who provide services for our youth and our seniors, the wonderful librarians, workers who maintain the roads, buildings, parks, gardens, the workers who put everything in place for 4th of July parades, the street festivals, the, you know, the people who pick up the garbage, recycle our plastics, the IT and public media workers, et cetera, et cetera. And I'd like you to imagine for a moment if these workers did not come to work for one day. If these workers did not come to work for two or three days or a whole week, I believe that everything that keeps this, all the gears and all the pieces that keep this city flowing and running would fall apart. So think about how much we depend on the hard work of the women and men in these cities, in the city. And also remember whose name is above the door outside of this city council, Sammy Abbott. Sammy Abbott was the mayor here when our family settled in this community. Uh-oh. Well, and I know that he lived to fight injustice. He was a labor organizer, and he was a champion of people who are fighting injustice. And I know that he would say that it's time to respect the workers in this city, and to sit down and negotiate in good faith with their union, Ask Me Local 3399. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? No? All right, now we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. As was mentioned earlier tonight, Robin Chewey, who was the homeless woman who lived in the bus stop on Maple Avenue and Lincoln Avenue for about two years. We were able to help her to find housing a couple of months ago, before the cold weather set in. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, she had a heart attack, and last week, she succumbed to the complications from that heart attack and passed away. Prior to her passing, Captain Collington from the Police Department was able to locate her family, and her mother and sister were here with her when she died, at her bedside. I did want to let community members know that her wake and funeral service will be held at the Tacoma Park Seventh-day Adventist Church on Carroll Avenue up in Old Tacoma. The wake starts at 10:00 AM Friday, and services will be held at 11:00. Public is invited to attend. I know that there are many people who talked with her at the bus stop and grew to know her, and many of them helped her in different ways. So, please come and pay your respects, and also let your neighbors know so that they can come also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? Councilwoman Circe?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give a shout-out to the Department of Public Work Staff. Residents in New Hampshire Gardens had, on Glen Side, there was a speed bump that was giving lots of people havoc. And Darrell and her crew and folks went out there and fixed it, and folks have been all enraged on the listservs about how thankful they are that that speed bump no longer has a pothole in the middle of it. So, I just wanted to thank the Public Works team for addressing that need in New Hampshire Gardens.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dabala?
Yeah, just one thing. If you live in the Long Branch-Lego neighborhood, and you have some concerns or issues about Washington Gas work in your neighborhood, this Monday, at the community center here, at 7:00 o'clock, this Monday, February 12th, Washington Gas and the Neighborhood Association and myself are all going to be available to talk some of these issues through. So come on down, and if you can't, there's a way to file a question without showing up, and we'll try to get to it. So just email me. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
First, I'd like to thank the leadership of the Tenant Association for coming down today. I really appreciate your comments. I hope city staff will set up a meeting with you guys and see how we can work with the management of the building and the landlord. But I just want to thank you for taking the time. I know three minutes sounds like a lot, but, you know, when you have different issues, you're trying to get out, you know, the time goes quickly. I would like to say that this Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend a community event hosted by Tababu and his wife Sarah, the owners of Blessed Coffee. This was a celebration for their son, Yared, who recently graduated from high school, and he's going to spend the year in Ethiopia, working for Africa Services Committee. This is a great opportunity, you know, Yared has been a part of Tacoma Park for many, many years. When he gets back, I don't think we're going to be, we're going to recognize him. But he's going to work on a lot of great things, whether they're health issues, like TB, AIDS, and entrepreneurship. But he needs our help. He is required to raise $500 a month. So if you are able to contribute, please contact Africa Services Committee. You can just Google them, and make a donation in Yared's name so that he can make his monthly requirement to be part of this program. Switching gears, highway user revenue is once again a priority for the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee. And on Wednesday, there are going to be a couple hearings that we would like council members and senior staff to attend. But we have a postcard this year. So, if you're on social media, please take a minute, yes, thank you, Alex. Take a minute and hashtag #FixLocalRoads. It doesn't matter what else you're talking about, but please, put that hashtag out there. H U R, Fix Local Roads, Maryland. This is our year. We got to get this money for the municipalities in Maryland. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. This Sunday, I believe it's Sunday, Sunday, yes, February 11th, from 1:00 to 4:00, is the Midwinter Play Day here at the Community Center, and it is sponsored by the Recreation Department and the nonprofit Let's Play America. At 1:00, Congressman Raskin will be here, leading Simon Says, if you want to come and join in that. I will be there also, and possibly some of my colleagues as well. So just want to invite you to that. There'll be lots of fun activities for kids, adults, everyone. So come on out and have a good time.
Awesome. I'll wrap up with a few things. This week, Councilwoman Kostic and I were on Morning Edition, and I got to do the Kojo Nambi Show yesterday, talking about, well, the topic was street names and the changing of street names, but both Councilwoman Kostic and I relayed this back to our racial equity work that we're doing in the city and ongoing conversations we're having. But check that out if you're interested. Also, I wanted to let people know that we're having a swearing-in of a new officer on Tuesday evening at 6:15. Hanuk, who many of you may know, who grew up in Tacoma Park, worked, went to schools here, worked in our rec department, went to Montgomery College, and now has made it through the police academy, and we're going to swear him in on Tuesday evening. Please come if you're available. We're going to start around 6:15, 6:30, and we would love for you to come and celebrate him getting through the police academy and becoming one of our officers. We are going to get back to doing our Friday morning coffees. The first one we're going to do is a Ward 2 and Ward 6 combo on the morning of February 23rd at 8:00 AM at La Chiquita. That is on New Hampshire Avenue. It's the restaurant with the blue awning. Is that the name of it? Did I get it wrong? East West Highway, sorry. East West Highway. It faces East West Highway. It has the blue awning, and is across the street from the Red Top Gas Station. It has plenty of parking if you have to drive there, and also very accessible by bus or walking. And so that will be at 8:00 AM on February 23rd. And then we're scheduling our Ward 3 one, a place to be determined, but that will be on March 16th. We're getting back into doing our Friday morning coffees. The Folk Festival Committee wanted us to announce that tomorrow evening, at the Hefner Park Center on Oswego Avenue, is having one of their first meetings. The committee will be meeting from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and requesting if anyone wants to get involved, learn more, volunteer this year. They would really appreciate people coming out for that. And my final thing is just to wish our colleague, Councilmember Kovar, a happy birthday. All right, and I just want to add my thanks to everyone who has come out tonight to present and give comments. I really appreciate you taking the time. And I'll turn it over now to the city manager.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, you can, yeah. Go ahead.
I wasn't planning to talk, but I have to say thank you, and my birthday was a great early dinner with my wife at Republic, followed by coming here. Great opportunity to do that. Thank you.
And you get to spend Valentine's Day with us next week, too, so it's just. All right, city manager comments?
Thanks. Hard to top that. Although, I'm hoping that this does. Tomorrow morning, supposedly, Pepco is going to be switching over the power at the light fixtures in Tacoma Junction, so that then, whatever needs to happen to switch them to Montgomery County takes place. So we've been told that it's scheduled for the morning, starting around 8:00 AM, and we would be contacted to let us know how that goes, so. You know, I really don't care if it's gridlock, if they get those fixed. We'll do something. I wanted to give a shout-out to the rec department for managing rec summer camp registration process. This week is the opportunity for city residents to sign up for the rec department summer camps. On the first day, 65% of the slots were filled. And so, 1,353 slots were filled on Monday. New summer camp offerings this week include a STEAM camp, science, technology, engineering, arts, math camp, a theater camp, and they're taking camp recess, which was at the rec center, and they've renamed it to the New Avid Venture Camp, and doing some more things. So I'm really happy about that. Non-resident registration will begin on Monday, the 12th, and we hope that there's some slots left, but if not, then Montgomery County Rec Department can step up and offer more services to this area. I wanted to give an update on some major construction projects. The city held the mandatory pre-bid meeting today on the Flower Avenue-Green Street project. Bitter submissions are due March 21st, and so by early April, we should know what the price is going to be and get that project really started. The actual construction probably won't be till near the end of summer, but it's moving. Even faster, and you can celebrate at La Chiquita, is that near the end of March, the construction- the construction project for the Ethan Allen Gateway will begin. And the anticipated construction project is six months. Lincoln Avenue's sidewalk construction bid has not yet been advertised. We're awaiting approval of the final, of the bid documents by S H A. They provide a significant portion of the funding through the Safe Routes to School grant. And that's a big project. It's expensive, but we will keep you posted on that. I wanted to also note on the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, we've updated some information on the project page, including a new question and answer fact sheet on parking. There've been a number of parking questions, and there've been questions about, do we really need underground parking? Do we need a lot of parking? Do we need very little parking? We try to answer the questions as best we know about the number of spaces now, what's proposed, and what the various kind of criteria are that Montgomery County considers on numbers of parking spaces. I will say it's somewhat indistinct, but the links are there for all of the information that the county provides. We may have even an opportunity to find out more information when we have the presentation on the development process next week. The Tacoma Junction traffic study, which was supposed to have been underway, has been kind of on hold till we get good days on the day, good weather for the days that they do the study because we want an accurate study. So they've got the equipment, but actually turning the cameras on to do the counts, you know, it needs to wait for good weather days on the days that are typical travel patterns. So days when there's school delays and other things are not good days for that.
Do we anticipate the presentation of the results to move from the rolling?
My guess is that it might because this, I had expected that this would have been done, but it's, it really, they can't get the good days for the tests yet. I did provide some information to the Committee on the Environment and the Nuclear Free Zone Committee about an approach to looking at socially responsible investing as directed by the council a number of months ago. And I've shared that information here in the city manager comments, so you can link to it if you'd like. I did send it to each of the members of the two committees so that they are familiar with those provisions. And this, the, I think the important part is that when we have an opportunity for the council to say, what kind of investing? What is it? What are the goals that you're looking at? Is it environmental? Is it, don't do nuclear, don't do this kind of defense, don't do oil, do, do community reinvestment, whatever those kind of criteria are, that that will be a great time for those committees and for the general public to weigh in about what they'd like to see the city's investments and, and banking focus on. Yesterday, staff met with representatives of the Purple Line, MTA reps, Michael Madden, who's the deputy project manager for the Purple Line, and Joy Hamilton, MTA's construction outreach manager. It was a very good meeting for about an hour and talking about, I see, I see a typo. We've got Tacoma Park Borders, B-O-A-R-T-S, so we'll, we'll fix that. But the, they're, talked a lot about how do we work with them closely so that as issues arise, we can deal with them and so businesses can get the kind of help that they need when construction starts taking place. And so as we go through, we're also doing outreach to the concessionaires, outreach folks, so that we have really good connections. And it sounded actually some interesting ideas for even things like putting coupons to local businesses in the paychecks of the construction workers. And, you know, having some fairs when we're at some major points along the ways to really celebrate. First of all, acknowledge that it's a difficult process to do construction, but also celebrate the fact that we are getting major infrastructure contribution to our community. So I think there'll be some good things that we'll keep sharing. I believe that it makes sense for a presentation to the council that happens sometime in May or so. And we have some hiring, some positions open. We urge people to look at our human resources jobs page for positions. I do want to note that we had advertised and done interviews for the Economic Development Specialist's two-year position. Those were unsuccessful. The, the best candidate that we really wanted took a different position. We're asking, and I'll be coming back to you to talk about the opportunity, perhaps to make it from a two-year contract position to a permanent position. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that I'll be having those discussions with you.
If you could go back to the, the projects and specifically on the Ethan Allen Gateway. So as some folks may recall, there was a meeting last night here from WSSC about their water main project along Philadelphia Avenue, which is starting in the spring. And of course, there's also going to, that's going to coincide to some extent with the work Pepco is going to be doing on Eastern Avenue and Tacoma Avenue and Fenton Street. And so on Ethan Allen Gateway, now is that a complete, how, how much of that will block traffic, if at all? And do you have a sense for that yet?
I'm not going to answer that. I'll, I'll get more information. But we do have quite a lot of information on the project page. I think a good amount of the work is not in the roadway as much. It's on the sides.
Right. It'll be good to just get a sense for that.
Oh, yeah.
I'll check, I'll check that page and.
Come to the coffee on the, no, I'm kidding.
What's that?
To come to our coffee.
Maybe I will. Maybe I will. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the update. On our legislative update this week, I think we have one item. Last week, Councilmember Smith talked about the tax duplication letter that the Montgomery Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League would like to send. We asked all the council members to take a look at that and just, we're going to do a quick show of hands vote on support for moving forward and having us sign on to that letter. Any, Councilmember Kovar, do you have a question or is that an old?
No, that's old, sorry.
Okay. Great. Any questions on that? All right. All those in favor of signing on to the tax duplication letter, please raise your hand. That's everybody. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, for your work on that. Now we'll go to our voting session. The first item is a single reading ordinance regarding purchase of police vehicles. I think this is coming before us as a city manager or deputy. City manager, you want to?
Yes. When you all approved this originally, the ordinance included the name of the company who was previously on the Maryland state contract that we were going to use to purchase the vehicles. And the company switched as of January 1st. So this just corrects that. And we're going to be purchasing the vehicles through the state of Maryland contract through Hertrick Fleet Services as opposed to Apple Ford as the original ordinance indicated.
And there's no change in price or any of the things?
No, no.
Great. Councilwoman Kostick?
I just did have one logistical question on that. So what happens to the previous, the previous ordinance that we passed? Is that just automatically null? Does that need to, does there need to be language in this one to null that? Or what happens with that?
Yeah. We could do it either way, but it would, that's an authorization. The ordinance was an authorization to purchase.
So I'm not signing a contract for it.
So the city manager won't be purchasing double the cars. Will you?
No, but I think that's a good, that's a good question. And maybe there's some, we'll make some notation and that, that the other one was no longer valid.
Great. Would someone like to move the single reading ordinance? Councilwoman Circe, second?
Second.
Councilman, Councilman Siemens. Any other questions on this or conversation? All right. So the single reading ordinance, so the clerk wanted to take the roll.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. Our next item is a second reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of furniture for the Human Resources Department. There are no changes since the first reading of this ordinance. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Kostick moves it? Do I have a second?
Aye.
Councilwoman Circe, seconds. Any questions or conversations on this? No? All those in favor? Oh, we need the roll call again. It's a second reading ordinance.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. The next is our consent agenda item. There was a change that is in your folders that the city clerk sent us a note about regarding the appointment to the Committee on the Environment. Just as a reminder, we do not discuss consent agenda items. We just move the consent agenda and then vote on it. So the orange one. All right. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
I do.
Councilwoman Dibala moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Smith. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Consent agenda passes. All right. Now we're on to our work session. The first is a discussion of our city council priorities. I first just want to thank our deputy city manager for all his work in putting together the council's comments on this and going through it. I think you did an excellent job of capturing all of our discussions on the two nights that we held them. We held two retreats, one on January 19th and the other on January 25th. And so what is this document? This document are the council's priorities for our term. Our term is for three years because we're changing our city elections. So we're having three-year terms this time. And then in 2020, when the next city elections, it will go back to two-year terms. And so the city council gets together, talks about our priorities, and that's what this document reflects. What we will then do on the night of February 28th, when we meet with the department heads, is go through this document, discuss it with them, and then pick out the priorities for FY 2019. So as we are doing the budget, we will look at and say, what are the things that we are going to prioritize for FY 19? And we'll do that this, on the night of February 28th. So what are we doing tonight? Tonight, we want to take the opportunity to review this document, see if there are any other changes that council members would like to see. We will then have the meeting on the 28th, and then it will come back to the full council. And we will have a resolution to adopt these as our priorities. All right. Any comments or questions? Any suggested? Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I do also want to thank, in addition to my colleagues who were at the retreat and made lots of great suggestions, Jason Danweber's work to pull all this together because it is a very complicated document with a lot of details in it. One thing I do want to say is, and the mayor mentioned, it's a three-year document, although we can modify it as we go along, and maybe we'll do that every year. Not everything on here will necessarily be done or achieved or accomplished in one year, and some of them may stay on there forever because they're ongoing efforts. But I just want to say in terms of staff bandwidth and, and the amount of resources that it may take budgetarily to do some of these things, everything on here is a priority for us, assuming this is the version that we adopt. But it may take a while to get to some of them, and we'll do, we'll do the best we can. But I view it partly as a, here's a roadmap for the things we want to do and partly as our, an expression of our values going forward. A couple of great examples I just want to point out of things that we added in the Liveable Community for All. We included seniors, which we hadn't specifically mentioned, as a community within the city in need of assistance. And we talk about considering the strategic plan. That's the Economic Development and Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. I don't think we're just going to adopt it or reject it. We're going to pull the things from it that we like and talk about that a lot. And, and we have emphasized now in a way that we didn't before, affordable housing. Of course, we're going to develop a strategy to address the racial equity issues that we've been talking about a lot. That wasn't previously in the document in the same level of detail. We're talking about minimizing the adverse impacts of changes to the federal tax system, which a lot of people have been concerned about. And that may be a legislative matter in Indianapolis. And we're also talking about addressing the personal property tax issue for businesses, which a lot of people have, have pointed out. One of the areas that I thought we needed just to maybe tweak it a little bit, there are two separate references to the tree ordinance and tree canopy goals, one on page four of the document and one on page seven of the document. And I just want to make sure, I think I understand what we're doing there, but I want to just make sure that we're, that the language appropriately does it. So on page four, it talks about continuing to support the tree canopy goals, which is something that I support. And then also coordinate efforts to review the tree ordinance with the goals so that they're not in conflict. I don't think they are in conflict, but when you go to page seven, it says, consider existing tree ordinance and develop recommendations for improvements. I'm just not sure it's quite as clear as it could be what it is that we're trying to do there. And my hope is that we wouldn't just say, consider tree ordinance and develop recommendations, but actually make improvements that will help ensure that we have a more user-friendly ordinance. So I guess I would lean towards saying.
Just change consider to review, so it's.
Right.
Parallel to the page four?
Right. Or improve. And maybe, and.
Well, it says.
I'm not sure whether we're implementing recommendations for improvements, but develop and implement, develop and implement. I'd say review existing tree ordinance and develop and implement improvements as opposed to recommendations for improvements. But at a minimum, we should say review in both cases because I don't think we're just talking about recommendations. We're actually considering some changes.
So on page seven, it would read, review existing tree ordinance, develop and implement improvements. Other folks?
Well, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I just, okay. Sounds like other, everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Was there anything else, Councilmember Kovar?
That was the only one that I had.
Great. And actually, as you reminded me when you were talking, just to note, you know, from the prior city council, the first year, that council adopted its priorities, and then the second year was very different. And we were looking at a very different federal context and did add things like upholding our sanctuary city. We also added work on our racial equity framework. And so do you want to emphasize that this is sort of a living document over the three years that we will be working together? So, Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah. Thank you, Jason. And thank you, everybody else on the council. I think this is a really ambitious, but really good set of goals. And it cover, it addresses a lot of the things that I am concerned about and have talked about with Ward Two residents. I want to call out also, just as Peter did, the Living Community for All section and some of the specific groups that are mentioned in there that I've talked with Ward Two residents about, and point out that, that housing, particularly for renters, which is almost half of our community, is, is throughout this document. I'm particularly pleased with some of the specific strategies listed in the engaged government and responsive government section, because again, that's, that's things I heard loud and clear from, from my constituents. And I have one suggested change of my own and a, and a message first from the Committee on the Environment. There'll be a Green Team meeting on, is it Monday, March 7th?
5th.
5th, Monday, March 5th, which we'll talk about the environmental aspects of this and also talk about some of the lesser tiered goals. But they, they're very interested in pursuing not just the stormwater, but water quality goals, which have kind of gotten bumped down over the last couple of years to a lesser tier. So just FYI on that one. But they like the, they, they met on Monday and they like the renewable and energy efficiency part of this a lot. The suggestion that I would like to make is in the section, the last section, economic, in the development section, I'd like to, to, to add that as part of the housing and economic development work we're looking at, also to look at sustainable development guidelines or sustainable development strategies or techniques, which is something that the Environment, Committee on the Environment has been working on but went on hold for a while. It would make sense, as Councilmember Circe pointed out in, in an email, everybody, to do that when we do, look at the bigger picture and not to do it alone. But I would like to have you all consider mentioning it as part of housing and economic development, that we consider the sustainability aspect of it. And I can propose specific words if.
Do you have specific words to?
I guess one question I have is, I mean, that is, that's in, that's one of the recommendations as we go through the housing plan, too.
is, that's in, that's one of the recommendations as we go through the housing plan, too. So, I don't mean, I don't mean to say that it shouldn't be in here called out. That's your decision. But, it certainly would be something that we would want to discuss also and identify, implement on, as you review, as you consider the strategic plan for housing.
Yeah, I don't remember beans. Maybe I missed it. I don't remember beans specifically in there.
I may mismembering, but that's what, I thought I remembered seeing it in there, so.
We'll check.
But, in any event.
Yeah. So, I would suggest that either in the first bullet, under strategies for community development, or as a separate bullet, probably as part of the first one, "Develop implementation plans," colon, semicolon, "Consider sustainability aspects of strategies adopted," or "Consider sustainability aspects of strategies adopted." And then that would give us the room to, it could be the guidelines, it could be something else. But, we wouldn't forget to look at it while we're looking at everything else. And I'm open to suggestions. I'm on the box on page nine, this first of three, "Develop implementation plans," and then semicolon, and then "Consider sustainability aspects of adopted strategies," or words to that effect. One of the reasons I mention it, besides it being something that's been worked on for a while, is that I got a report this week that Maryland is one of the top 10 states in adopting LEED-certified development. And, it would make sense for us to be at least considering it, if not being a little, at least equal with, if not ahead of the curve compared to other communities in Maryland.
One question that I have is, to what extent does that potentially overlap with some of the elements that are outlined on page four, where you talk about continuing program and policy efforts? And I kind of consider that to be somewhat broad as it relates to multifamily buildings, businesses, and city operations. And then there's some aspects of new buildings, that's in the second box. So...
Oh, okay.
Consider incentives for multifamily and new buildings, continue efforts. So, I think there may be some adequate coverage of that point on page four with the first two strategies, under "Continue to be a leader in community sustainability," that doesn't need to be reiterated on page nine.
The way I see them is that those are specific to energy, and sustainability covers a great deal more than that. It covers our stormwater, it covers trees, it covers plantings, water quality runoff, a bunch of other things. The site as well as the building. But, I can be persuaded to interpret that one the same way.
Yeah. I think part of it is that the goal is more sustainability more broadly, and then the actual strategies are pretty specific to a particular type of sustainability. So, it could be that we are, instead of just limiting things to renewable energy for that second block, we maybe make that a little more open-ended in terms of the approach. So, it could be increased use of sustainable strategies, i.e. renewable energy, especially solar throughout the city, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. Well, if...
Yeah. I mean, I'm just, yeah. I think there may be a couple of places where we can kind of make that point. And then keep...
Keep this one focused on?
Focus on, yes. Because I truly believe that, and that was one of the points that I wanted to bring up, is the fact that, you know, for our city, trying to develop a community development act, you know, path forward that includes economic development and, given all of the different things that are impacting our community, I think these strategies are really about level-setting in terms of building a strategy, building our key stakeholders that are really trying to help us in terms of the different business associations in the area, and really just trying to reach out to businesses in the community. So, I kind of like the notion of making this a little broader about establishing a development strategy as a whole, and then, which would include some of the elements of facade and what are some aspects of building requirements that we want to make sure are met. But, I'm a little, I'm questioning whether or not there may be a lot of duplication if we include a lot of the energy points that were raised on four on, in nine as well. I don't know what others may think.
Do we want to discuss this, or should I come up with a couple of sets of words and ask them around?
Yeah. I was going to offer, one thing is that potentially, since the goal on page four is "Continue to be a leader in community sustainability," that instead of trying to add it to the boxes there, add a new box that would be, as we're considering, basically takes like that first box on page nine, but calls out the sustainability.
So, but put it in the...
Put it in on page four.
Yeah, that works.
So, like, yeah, if anyone followed that?
Yeah. I think we can do that. So, basically duplicating much of the language of the first box under strategy on page nine as a new box on page four under community sustainability, but focus it on sustainable building practices and design. I can work with you on...
So, if we do that?
There's a good example of why we thank Mr. Dan Weber for all of his help.
We don't need to get into all of this right now, but if people are okay with that approach, then let's just go with it.
And actually, while we're talking about that, could I just raise something that Councilwoman Kostick pointed out, which is, when we talk about the strategic plan, could we insert the word "draft"? Consider the draft strategic plan?
Yeah, good idea.
On page one?
All those places.
And page nine?
Right. There's a number of places.
Yeah. I just think it was an excellent point that she raised, so that we're not giving the impression that we have this, that we're considering this, it's still a draft strategic plan, and we're getting comments. So, I think that would just be helpful. And then, while I'm speaking, I'll just, on page one also, the first strategy box there just doesn't have the policy budget. It's a minor thing. All right. Councilwoman Cersei, did you have other things, did you have changes you wanted on that section, or?
No, I'm good.
All right. I want to make sure. All right. Councilwoman Kostick.
All right. Thank you. I want to just echo the thanks to our deputy city manager and to all of my colleagues for all the hard work on this document. As a new person to the council, it's been really an educational and useful process to go through and really talk about what we want to do, what's been done, what might be possible, what the limitations are. And, I think we've had some great discussions during the retreats, and it's really been helpful. I think it's, there's a lot in here, as my colleagues have said, and I think there are a lot of things that I'm excited about working on and others are excited about working on and can really benefit the city moving forward. I just have a couple of very small things. I would, I want to thank Mr. Olson for the recommendation related to the racial equity strategy, and I want to ask that we go ahead and make that change. I think it's okay to still refer to funding if we want to, but I think we should make that a separate, you know, semicolon and then seek, make plans to, I'm not sure if I can find it here, make plans to...
Page two.
Page two, here.
To do it.
Yeah. So, provide racial equity training, and then we could have a semicolon, "Seek grant funding to support it," at the end of that. I think that's a great point, because we do want to go ahead with it. And then a secondary item was under fiscally sustainable government, looking at, on page three, under the goal, minimize adverse impacts of changes to the federal tax system. I think it would be useful to add in the strategy, mitigate negative impacts, to add the word negative or adverse, which is something we discussed a little bit during our retreat.
Yeah.
So, if we can just add adverse or negative in the strategy section, I think that would be useful. And that's all I have.
Shall I make those changes, or do you think you get those required discussion?
I think people are nodding their heads. I don't hear. Yeah. Sorry. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, again, voice our thanks to city manager and deputy city manager for their work, and also the other staff members who helped with this process. But, I also want to thank my colleagues on the council. It's been really heartwarming to see the way that this has grown through the years, where the councils and this council has become so strategic in our work, and actually laying out a plan in advance for where we want to go and help to guide us. And it was, you know, for the last council, it was, I think, the best we have ever done as far as following our plan. And that's, that's a credit to the past council, but also to the new city manager, new at that time. And, I think we're getting better at this job. So, I thank everyone.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes. When I was speaking before about the tree canopy issues and the ordinance, I got distracted and meant to mention, just make reference to three other, what I think are really important strategies we included in here that are responsive to issues that people in the community have mentioned. So, I'm just going to take one more minute to just make note of those. So, one of them says, and this was there before, but it's been strengthened now, "Improve notification systems for utility and other work in the right of way, including work by city contractors and staff, and explore development of accountability measures to address deficient notification and to strengthen monitoring of utility and contractor work." It's something I've heard a lot about from residents, so I think it's important to have that. We'll have to work on figuring out how to do that. And then, another one, and this is relevant to the code enforcement matter that we tabled for today and will be taking up later, "Consider existing issues and code enforcement strategies related to the intersection of commercial and residential areas, and develop and implement recommendations for improvements there." So, this is an issue where people live near areas where we have commercial activity, and it's the issues like lights and garbage and noise that have been mentioned before. And then the last one I wanted to mention, and this is something that's come up particularly with respect to Old Town, just because, as always happens, there's a churn in the business community, and some beloved places are moving on or maybe reappearing in different forms, and people care about their local businesses and the fact that we have small businesses. So, one of the other that I'll mention here, a new strategy is, "Provide direct outreach and support for local businesses." Again, that'll be done, I think, in the context to some extent of the draft, and saying the word "draft," of strategic economic plan. But, I think that's an important piece that a lot of people in the community have raised some understandable questions about, so I'm glad we have that in here as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
First, I'd like to thank staff and primarily Mr. Dan Weber for leading this effort. Sometimes, you know, you think that this is something that we should do throughout the year rather than just a couple times, a couple meetings in January. But, the comments that I would like to give for consideration, under a livable community for all, there's one policy point that I think that was discussed in previous councils that I think this council should consider is eminent domain. Everyone received an email from Wayne Sherwood that talked about St. Paul, Minnesota, and the city trying to help tenants and some landlords improve the conditions of their properties. And, the project started out in a pilot. There weren't the number of landlords that they anticipated subscribing to it. Now, it's throughout the entire city. Some council members in St. Paul don't believe that the properties that really need the assistance are going to get that assistance because there are just too few dollars, and there's so many issues with the stock of multifamilies. So, I think that there's something, I think a way for us to look at, how do we improve the quality of life of people that live in apartment buildings that have questionable maintenance conditions, is how can we use eminent domain as a negotiating tactic with the landlord? Like I said, it's something that has been brought before the council before, it's been shot down, but I think it's something that we need to consider if we really want to improve the quality of many of these garden-style apartments. Moving on...
Do you want us to discuss that first? Councilmember Smith, before you.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss it.
Just to, might be easier to take them one at a time. Does anyone have any thoughts on? I would just say that under, we did have an item, "Develop incentives and possible new enforcement measures for landlords to improve living conditions of tenants." And maybe if we change that, say, "Develop incentives and possible new enforcement and other measures for landlords," that we don't call out one specific tactic or strategy like eminent domain, but consider it included in that, and the council can have further conversation about when eminent domain might be appropriate in the future.
Where were we at up here? I'm sorry.
Page one, it's the second goal, but if you moved over to strategies under the second goal, it's the third strategy. So, as I understand, as Councilmember Smith was talking about it, I think it fits in this one.
To me, it's also part of the implementation steps that would come out of the housing strategy and the economic development strategy, too. But, again, if that's a higher level, maybe it's better here, because it's existing problems, not just...
Right.
Did it break your head?
No. Sorry.
I was saying that it's existing problems and not just prob... Let me rephrase that.
A whole lot of our housing issues are existing problems. I mean, that's a lot of what our strategy is going to be doing, is dealing with our existing properties.
Right.
I'm not saying that it not be called out here, but, but I do know that there's a number of tactics that you'll be considering as you go through the housing.
Yeah. I was agreeing with where the mayor was suggesting to place it. Again, the housing and economic development strategy is a, is a higher-level kind of look, so maybe it fits better here in the first line, page one.
Cool. So, then we'll just amend this to be "Develop incentives and possible new enforcement and other measures," and not call out specifically eminent domain. I'm seeing heads nod. Okay. Councilmember Smith, your second one?
Let's see here. This is just a comment, when it's down at fiscal sustainable government, fiscally sustainable government, you know, we're going to look at, I guess, minimize, what is it, adopt financial policy to determine the appropriate level of designated reserves. I mean, that's an issue that many councils have discussed. I don't know if the uncertainty that has come before us because of the new tax law, I don't know if we should even take this one up. That's just my feeling. I think we're going to have to husband every dollar we have, and I think our reserves have been good in the past, and I think they will be good in the future. Bear with me, I have a couple more. Under engage responsive service-oriented government, on the first column, identify policing priorities. One idea is to possibly consider a bill of rights for young people, something that lays out how they should be treated with the police department. I think that would be a good idea. Maybe our youth council can, can take it up. Right under that, improve communications with residents, especially two-way online communication. One area that I think has been really good has been the Facebook Live interviews, or they're like Q and As that the housing department is doing. It would be great if we could have other departments like Public Works and even the police department do some impromptu Facebook Live type of, you know... police department do some impromptu Facebook Live type of, you know, situations where you don't need, you know, a big set. And, I mean, I love City TV. I use City TV a lot, but sometimes you're in your office and something comes up and, you know, you just want to comment. And I think that's what makes Facebook Live so powerful.
Well, should we add, like, social media?
I think that would be.
Right after two-way online communication?
Yeah, I think that would be good. And then my colleague, Mr. Kovar, discussed the utility notification. I did have a conversation with WSSC. There is going to be a draft MOU, so, Mr. Kovar, you can comment on that and see how we can improve that. And that's more, you know, having to do with the improved notification system. So we're going to start with WSSC. If we can get something with, with them that they'll sign, then we can talk to the other utilities. Thank you.
Great. Can I just get clarification from the rest of council, whether or not folks want to add, "Explore establishing a youth, young, sorry, explore establishing a young person's bill of rights as a strategy under the goal of identifying policing priorities and explore options for enhanced police-community relations?"
I don't disagree with it. I don't know enough about it to know.
Would it make sense to, to ask the youth council what they think about?
Okay, maybe we should do that and not add it to a strategy at the moment?
Well, they might get back to us by saying, yeah, add it. It's pretty important. But I feel better, I feel better knowing that.
Okay. Since we have a representative of our youth council here. Who's nodding, she can take that back to the group. All right.
Oh, and I have one more. Down at the community development for an improved and equitable quality of life, major projects, I would proffer that this, we need to consider whether or not this is a time, since we have so many development projects going on in this city, that the city send representatives to ICSC's conference to start promoting the city for future projects. And maybe we can piggyback on the district code of Columbia's booth, because they're there every year, so.
What was the conference again?
ICSC.
Thank you.
International Council Shopping Centers. Thank you.
Anything else on this?
So did I, should I take direction to specifically refer to social media and the two-way online communication?
Yeah, add social. I think we were all nodding our heads. I think the young persons' bill of rights, we're going to ask the youth council to come back for, on that consideration. And I think the others were just sort of notes, right? Yeah, the others were just notes and comments, so not be added to the document.
Yeah.
Good. All right, so now we'll move on to discussion of amending Tacoma Park Code Title VIII, business outdoor cafes. That's our last item this evening. We had a work session on this a couple of weeks ago, and now we're.
Ms. Daines will make some comments, and we have the city attorney here.
I was drawing it out until she could get down here. I was like, no! Ms. Daines?
Good evening. Earlier this fall--
Now you're on, now you're on.
Is it on now? Earlier this fall, the city council was asked to consider a request from a local business to create an outdoor cafe in front of their restaurant. At that time, you provided direction to staff that you were generally in support of the proposal, and we've been working to accommodate that request. The city code currently does not allow for the permitting of outdoor cafes in the city of Tacoma Park. We met with you a couple of weeks ago, where you were provided a draft ordinance and detailed background information in terms of some of the recommended requirements for an outdoor cafe and the permitting process itself. Based on the information and the comments that we received at that work session discussion, we've been working with the city attorney's office to go through and revise that original draft. And as noted in the cover memo, there were five general things that we've done. First and foremost, when you compare the red line to the draft that we're asking you to consider this evening, we deleted a lot of the extraneous, very detailed information regarding the permitting process, permitting requirements, and the general operations of the cafe. We've also expanded the definition of businesses that could apply for an outdoor cafe. There was concern that it was focused primarily in restaurants and restaurants that might be providing alcohol. It now includes coffee shops, cafes, community kitchens are included within this definition as well as retail establishments like the Co-op. We've also expanded or clarified that the definition of public right-of-way includes not only the sidewalk in front of the building, but parking areas that might be located within proximity of the establishment and the street. The ordinance that you saw before and the detailed information specifically referenced Laurel Avenue. This would allow it to be in other locations aside from just that general section of Old Town. We have also expanded the area that the outdoor cafe could be located to include the outside of the sidewalk as well as the parking area and the street. Right now, it's, the original proposal had it contiguous to the storefront, which if you're in the Old Town area on Laurel Avenue, if you established an outdoor cafe that was right up against the storefront of the building, you wouldn't be able to do it because there would not be that distance that we would need to meet ADA requirements. So by expanding the area that an outdoor cafe could be established, a restaurant like Tacoma Bev could have the restaurant, have a walkable area in the sidewalk, and then establish an outdoor cafe between the tree pits or the parking area or the street, depending upon what was being proposed. We have also clarified and responded to some questions that were raised by the council, the hours of the operation of the cafe, linking it to the hours of the establishment that's sponsoring the outdoor cafe, as well as any restrictions that might be imposed by the liquor board with the issuance of any liquor license that might be governing the operations of the cafe itself. So I think basically that is sort of summary of the modifications that have been made. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all these updates. I think you covered everything I remember from our discussion last time.
It was a long conversation. I hope so.
Just one quick question. You mentioned the fact that it's broadened to different types of establishments, including cafes or coffee shops you mentioned. I think we had also talked about even food trucks. But is there a restriction in there in percentage of sales with food and beverage?
No, but that would be covered by the liquor license, I believe. If I remember.
Right, I guess that was my point, is so that when, when someone's thinking about having something like a coffee shop, they still have to have a certain percentage of their sales from food products?
They would have to come, meet all the requirements that the county and the state have established for serving of alcohol. So they couldn't just all of a sudden say, you know, "Got a six-pack in the back, would you want a beer?" They would have to have a license and authorization. And I believe that they have to go through and verify the percentage of alcohol versus food that is served, and a series of other requirements regarding service training and how the area is cordoned off to prevent underage individuals from having beverages they're not allowed to have.
Okay. And then the last question in that same regard is, you know, since we've moved it from being contiguous with the establishment itself, have we checked, or is there any possibility that the current liquor laws, you know, precludes us from doing that?
No, I verified it before. I believe I've included in the code or revised code is a reference to a distance of about 25 feet, and that is the, within the parameters that the liquor board has established for the issuance of an outdoor cafe license. So essentially, here's your storefront. You can get a license for an outdoor cafe as long as the very beginning of the outdoor cafe is within 25 feet of the establishment securing the license.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I think this looks great, and I really appreciate all the work on it and the changes that you've made to address some of the things that we talked about. My question is, what is the process then for developing the administrative regulations? I have a couple of items I particularly wanted to make sure were noted in those. One was making sure that we do reference what was in the original document related to ensuring that there are five feet of sidewalk available for people. And then I was also a little bit concerned, and I think you answered my question in an email about this, that it seemed like this was a little more specific than in other cases, but that there was some wording regarding the use of exposed wood and specific colors, like bright colors, and it could only be used as an accent color. And I think, I don't know that we want to be that prescriptive.
No, no, no. We will not be doing that.
Okay, okay, good.
Our primary concern is the durability of the, whatever's installed in the place, in the area, and that it complies with the requirements if a liquor license is issued, and that it can be moved. My personal perspective is that color is not a bad thing, and that the funkier it can get, potentially, the more attractive and appealing it would be for not only the business establishment, but also sort of the general vibe that you get when you go down to an area where you see an outdoor cafe.
Yes, yeah. I've seen some great examples of things with exposed wood and bright colors, and I don't think we want to preclude that, so thank you.
Yeah, it would not, we're not anticipating including any restrictions regarding that.
Good, great. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this, Ms. Daines. I'm generally very supportive of it, and I just had one clarifying point, and maybe this falls under the regulatory piece that Councilmember Kostic just asked about, but I'm curious what would happen, if you've thought about this. For example, there's the pancake supper at the church, and there is a regular sidewalk there, but it's not wide enough to allow something to be sold out there, and that's just a one-time thing, or the community kitchen. Would this apply to those kinds of places, or only to ongoing businesses that are in the commercial district where you have a generally wide enough sidewalk area to accommodate that?
I can't address that as it applies to the pancake sale, but for the community kitchen, that is considered by the county to be a food, what is its correct terminology? Sorry, food service facility. And they would be required to comply, secure a permit to do something under this code.
And I guess I would like to say that, you know, we would never allow something that didn't have a way to pass by, you know, that didn't have a way for pedestrians to pass by. And that may mean that we'd block off some area of the street or have some other, other ways to accommodate that, but that's.
But likely, as a, in a standard residential width sidewalk, unless some special arrangements were made on a particular festival day or something, you wouldn't really have room in a situation like that.
But, I mean, there's, there are times when we can close things and give lots of advanced notice to that. My preference is not to do that, that, you know, the point is that people can get there and get past there, even if they're disabled.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
I was just going to add, I mean, it does say, it refers to places that regularly serve food, so to the, I don't know the logistics of the pancake breakfast, but if it was at the, you know, using the community kitchen, then it would be eligible for this kind of permit, but not if it's just a one-off event at the church.
Expanding upon that a little bit, the permits that we're proposing would be for roughly a year, or a year, and could be renewed. Events such as you're referencing, I assume, would have to get a special event permit if they're using any of the public area.
Right. It's a different process.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, this is great. I'm really excited about the idea, temporary and permanent outdoor cafes. I had a couple of questions. On, on hours of operation that include alcohol, is it, does this, as written, inadvertently say that the hours of operation of the outdoor cafe would be the same as the hours of operation of the, of the underlying business? Because I thought, we talked about the possibility that the outdoor cafe might have lesser hours. So somewhere, either in this or in the administrative regulations, to make sure, I would appreciate it if we could make sure that we have the flexibility to say, "The place is open until 1:00 a.m., but we want the outdoor park to close at 12:00 or 10:00 or whatever."
Okay.
And I'm, I'm just, that's a lawyer question, I guess, as to whether it's allowed the way it's written, or if we need to tweak it. And then, along, on, following up on what Councilmember Kostic said, on the administrative regulations, remind me, there's a point at which those are available for public comment, right? Yeah, so if someone had a specific, I've had people approach me with specific concerns, like, is it too close to the street, or is it for sure ADA accessible in this particular spot? That would be something that we would discuss, that they could bring up during the administrative regulations.
I think you're talking about two different scenarios.
Two different things.
The administrative regulations will establish the framework for the permitting process overall. An individual permit that would be issued for an outdoor cafe would deal with a specific area and a specific site plan, if you will, for that particular operation.
And the first one would for sure have public comment, the second one?
Correct.
Would depend, would probably not?
Administrative, the notice of administrative regulations is published in the city newsletter, and there's an opportunity to comment. And the comments that are gathered during that process are forwarded to the city council for consideration. And if I remember correctly, the council could call a public hearing based on the comments that are received regarding the administrative regulations.
Great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for putting this together. I'm surprised that it's taken this long for us to have this. If someone wants to file a complaint, is it necessary that we establish what that process would be in this code here, or, and what happens if someone files a complaint? It's just, I'll just let you explain.
I mean, I, no, I do not think we need a process for it, or not a formal process. I mean, I think we, the Housing and Economic Development Department, you know, fields the complaint and then, you know, looks to see if they're in violation of, you know, any of the conditions of the permit, the code, any other laws, and can act on it.
If, I mean, any, any of these, ultimately, I can say, you know, also, no, we have to change something or whatever. I mean, nobody's hesitated contacting me if they had complaints.
This is news, so.
No, I appreciate that, but, but I think that that's one of the, one of the things, is that certainly, you know, we can look in and see if the people are adhering to their permit, and that's something that we can enforce. And then the second part is, if there's a complaint about what is authorized, then that really is a point that needs to come back to me, because there may have been an error in what we authorized.
The other thing to take into consideration is, say, for example, if it's noisy, you know, those types of violations of the code in general are investigated by the police department, Neighborhood Services Division, the Health Department, depending upon if their concerns regarding the quality or the, the safety of the food, things like that.
Okay, so if an individual says, hey, you know, whatever the issue is, you find that there is an infraction, is, is it necess, would that void the permit, or will someone just be able to pay whatever the fine is, or?
Well, I would certainly make sure that the administrative regulations allow me to just pull the permit.
Okay, all right.
I, you know, I'm not interested in, you know, 15 bucks or something.
Right.
I want it corrected.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and so even in the code here, it says, "The city may suspend or revoke a permit for violation."
Right. And so is there an appeal process? And the reason why I'm asking these questions, with a liquor license, it's really strict. If you break the license-- If you break the license, certain things are supposed to happen, right? So I just want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we haven't thought about, you know, these types of possibilities, and that were covered.
If I may, at, towards the end of the draft, or at the end of the draft of the ordinance, there's a reference to what a violation of the permit, or the code would be, and I've identified it as a Class AA, I believe, which is a $1,000 fine. When you put a, issue a citation for a violation of the code, there's an opportunity for the individual to bait the condition, whatever it is that causes the violation. And if they refuse to abate it, or if they don't abate it, then it would go to court and we'd go through that court process.
Okay.
So there are a lot of checks and balances, I think.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, but, but there, there would be a, a process in the regulations for, for revoking a permit.
Okay, good.
You know, it wouldn't be extensive, certainly not as extensive as the, the liquor license situation, but, but, you know, there would be a process.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Searcy?
Excellent job. I think this is extremely well-written and direct, and I appreciate all of the effort that you all put into revising the document. One element that implies that compliance with all city, county, state, and federal laws and regulations, which I think is perfectly appropriate for this level of reg, but is it going to be the business owner's responsibility to know all of the city, county, state, federal laws and regulations that are applicable to them here?
Yeah.
Or, and, and so, because I think that kind of, you know, might answer some questions in terms of, like, well, how late can they be out if there's, if their restaurant is open till 2:00 a.m., but it's their responsibility to know, "We have a noise ordinance that kicks in at 11:00." You know, so, you know, is, is that one way in which we can ensure, like, if we're saying it's your responsibility to know what's applicable, and therefore if we violate, or, or are we planning to identify some, some key?
We can do some education and outreach, and develop some materials. A majority of the people who are getting, or getting outdoor cafe permits are already required to comply with a lot of state and local federal codes, and there's a licensing process that they have to go through in Montgomery County. If you go and you just Google, "What do I need to get a, open up a restaurant?", there's like a whole long list there of all the different rules and regulations that they have to comply with just to even be licensed, many of which are things that are important to the city council.
And, I mean, I think it's helpful to think of it this way, the, the kind of catch-all, you have to comply with all the laws, is as much for our benefit, so, because we don't know if every law they're gonna have to comply with. And certainly, the goal of this ordinance is to facilitate these cafes not to catch them in violations of unknown laws, so, you know, we're gonna inform them of any requirement we know of to, so they can get in compliance.
And just to follow up, when somebody, if somebody's applying for a permit, almost, for almost any of these kinds of things, there's a short description or educational piece that goes along with the permit form, so that, you know, there's some direction to the people, because we do want to help them comply.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Terrific, all right, well, great job, thank you so much, and we look forward to voting on this next week, I believe.
Next week.
So, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
All right, I think those are all our items on our agenda this evening. We are done.